I don't even know what day of the week it is. It's Thursday the fifteenth. It's like May all over again to ASC. Okay. All this regular meeting of the Southwest Looking Board of Education to order. It is Thursday, August the fifteenth at 7:03 PM. To recognize all our visitors, both here and online, like to please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. We are students of the class of 2019 at Watkins Memorial who enlisted in the military.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent. Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a firm, we can continue. E, public participation. Amen? Okay. Item F, adoption of agenda. We have an agenda with eleven items.
I'll move adoption.
Can I ask that maybe we move two of the non-agenda items up to the top? Would that be okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That'd be okay with you, Roger? You did.
That would be great. I'm sorry, I jumped the gun.
Items, ten A and B, if we can move those up to the presentation section.
Ten A.
Presentation or request to speak?
Or the request to speak, you want to do that? That would be fine. A second. Okay, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes, that passes. All right. We have, let me roll back up just a minute. Maybe. All right, we have presentations, we have A, Alexander Schwartz, first place in the state spelling bee. Woo woo! Yeah. Alexander, how are you? Are you writing your written? That's very cool. The Board of Education would like to recognize Alexander Schwartz with an award of excellence for his achievement in the 2019 Ohio State Fair 4-H spelling bee competition. Alexander received top honors in the state at the event held on July 27, 2019. Alexander's teacher, Michelle Hamilton, added the following comments to honor Alexander. "Alexander Schwartz is an extremely creative and athletic student. He works hard in school and enjoys designing and engineering. He has a lovely personality and is well-liked in the classroom. You will often find him playing football on the playground and helping others when it comes to cooperating in groups. During his free time, Alex spends multiple days training martial arts. When it came to the spelling bee, he pushed himself and studied hard. When Alex wants to do something, there is no stopping him. He is one bright, soon-to-be fourth grader that's going to change the world. The Board would like to congratulate Alex on his achievement."
This word is Armada.
Armada. Can you spell it first?
A-R-N-A-D-A.
Nice job. All right. How about Garmin and Miller for some OFCC updates?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think we need to get a resume from Alex.
I heard engineering there, huh?
From a design standpoint, with the two new buildings, the high school and the four-five, working closely with Robertson, we're reviewing some notes, we're answering their questions as they move through construction. On the Edna Elementary, we're in design with that. We just finished the SD phase of the design. We're putting estimates together for that and we'll meet with Robertson over the next couple of weeks and we'll compare estimates and we'll refine those numbers. So at the next board meeting, we should have some updates for you on pricing for that project. On the Watkins High School renovation, we're working closely with the administration on that permit committee after that to review the design. Our team has been on site the last two days doing some field verification so that we get the model accurate and we're just moving through that. That's going to be moving a little slower just because of the size of that building. They're slated for SD, I believe it's the end of October, for sometime in October. Same process, we'll have that phased submission and then we'll put estimates to it. So that's where we're at right now with that. Any questions on the design or the process? Thank you. Go down later.
For the athletic part, yes.
Sit down. Jump ahead. All right, and Robertson Construction. Thank you. Thank you.
There's another picture of Bob in this one.
Thank you.
Put you to sleep now.
All right. If you've driven by the site lately, you'll see a little bit more activity than you saw last month. We are progressing actually through both buildings. One of the things that we've added to these reports this month is the floor plans for each school. We do a lot of reference when we're in construction by the architect's drawing, so we'll reference area A, B, or C for the elementary. And then when you look at the high school, you'll see that there are a dozen areas probably that we'll be referencing through as we talk about work completed and what we're doing in the building for each area. So hopefully this, we'll keep this reference standard, it will not change, but that'll give you something to look at as you go through the reports when we reference an area so you can see what's being done in that area. From the executive summary really, for the elementary school, we're doing footers. We've got probably thirty masons on site that are starting to bring walls up in the tower area as well as the gym and stage areas. We've got plumbers on site, starting with underground plumbing. We've got electricians on site that are doing in-wall roughing along with the basin. Right now with the weather, you know, as much as I kind of whined and complained about the rain when we were trying to get some of the site work done, the weather's been great for work the last few weeks. So production has really picked up and in fact, we're staying right on our baseline schedule, if not picking up a couple of days of those weather days as we're moving through the building right now. On the high school, we actually dug the first footer yesterday and board today. So we do have footers started in the high school also with the mason mobilizing on site and should be starting the lay block this week. So positives on both schools, we did complete the monitoring as you see and we've got a lot of stone down for grades. One concern that we've been having at the high school is it seems like every other day we're running into a little bit of bad soil, so we're doing undercuts, which isn't uncommon with any site work package, but we are starting to run into it, it seems like every other day. So there's just these little, the small changes, but they're consistent.
When you say bad soil, what does that mean?
Bad soil where they can't meet the compaction or there's, we've found fatty clay, we've found some veins of some bad soils underneath the surface level and it's going through once we do a proof roll, we get the surface to the elevation that it should be, then we do a proof roll. If that proof roll shows the ground moving too much, then we'll do an exploratory. At the exploratory, if we find something, then we gotta do an undercut. So that's a process that we do continuously every day as we go through and get portions, whether it be parking lot or building pads or roads. When we get those to grade, those are tests that we do with the testing company observing it and with Garmin Miller observing it. But we're getting, we're getting out of the parking lots, which is good news, so those should be coming to an end. As far as owner contingency, there has been minimal usage or minimal projections. At the four-five building, we've got one change order that's been approved to date for $717. On the high school, there are, there is also one that both of those are related to site work. CMR usage, we've used a little bit in the site improvement, but nothing in the elementary school or the high school to date. And then just as a wrap up, kind of a look ahead on the site improvements package and what you'll be seeing from the dirt work in the next couple of weeks. The parking lots for the high school are being cut to grade and rolled out and you'll be seeing some stone go down on those. They will start cutting the connector road in, so that'll be a big milestone to see that road starting to take shape. We're still working on underground utilities, mainly on the high school side of things. And one of the bigger connections that we have to do is the connection right at Route 40, which we were previously kind of pushed off waiting for a no doubt permit, so they're gonna move back there. That's probably about a twenty-five foot deep excavation that they have to do to connect to the 450. That'll be somewhat of a time thing that'll take them a couple of weeks to get that done. Last month, I presented the utilities that we had in place, the things you can't really see and what they're working on. This month, as you see, most of the utilities that are going in are, or that have went in are at the high school parking lot areas. Our thought and our process was to work from the building pads into the parking lots and from the elementary to the high school to keep those utilities moving so we could get contractors around the site. And then another graphic that we put in here, as far as the areas that you see that are stone currently, which means they're at grade, and we would be ready to either start footers on the pads or be able to be at an asphalt grade. Added that in, you can see that we've got the elementary parking lot done, the bus loop done, one of the high, two of the high school parking lots done, and they're currently working on the big high school parking lot now. As far as schedule and the look ahead for the elementary school, really you're gonna, what you will see is the masons on site for the most part, you're seeing some scaffolding starting to go up, there will be more of that. We're gonna be focusing on the gym and dining area, the high wall areas will go up first and then they'll be moving over towards the mechanical room and the, one of the first level pods that also has like your arts and music area. So the last area that they'll come back to would be the opposite side of the building with classrooms and administration. At the elementary, when we talk about putting footers in, you can see that we've got probably about seventy-five percent of the footers in place. These are the main footers, there's still gonna be some cuts that we'll do for taking slabs, but for the main footers, we're about seventy-five percent complete. Over at the high school, you're gonna see what you saw probably two weeks ago with the elementary, you're gonna see the concrete crews, you're gonna see a lot of concrete trucks, you're gonna see the mason mobilizing and you'll probably start to see some scaffolding go up. Well, there will be scaffolding up by the time we meet next month. So both schools will have that going for them. And then just some of the project information in regards to submittals. At the site, early site projects, we had, you know, the seventy-five submittals, approximately three-quarters of them are approved. We've got about another fifteen percent that are closed out and another ten, fifteen percent that are still open. RFIs are information that we request from the architect on the site work. We've had a total of fourteen RFIs, it looks like there's maybe two, maybe three open at this point. Over at the elementary, it gets a little bit bigger when you talk about nine hundred and forty-nine submittals. Curious, so happy to hear that. Of that, fifty percent roughly is outstanding at this point with close to twenty-five percent closed out and twenty-five percent approved at this stage of the project. We've had a total of forty-five RFIs at the four-five building and again, there's probably three or four that might be open at this point and nothing is critical. Elementary or high school, I'm sorry? We're really just getting started. We've got over twelve hundred submittals there. And it's funny, it's kind of weird talking about this because we're always a month later on the high school than we are on elementary school, but we're really just getting started. We've got a lot of submittals going to the architect and Brian's getting bombed right now. RFIs, we've had twenty-one, again, two or three may be open, but no real concerns. Quality control, we're doing our pre-construction meetings. There's, there's only a couple that come up front, but a majority of these pre-construction meetings will start happening when we get close to roof enclosure and then a large group of them will happen once we start to go towards finishes. Safety, we've had one internal audit and one external audit at the site of which both passed and were in good shape and we've had no incidents, incidents to date. And then we've got some pictures of the site improvements, we've got the detention pond panoramic and a little bit of the high school site on the four-five, really just showing scaffolding and footer. On the high school, the pad. And then we, we're fortunate enough to have some aerial drone views that we could include in this package, which really gives a great perspective of what the site looks like, especially this one in on the high school pad. To try to understand the size of that high school, when you're standing on site, it's, it's gonna be a phenomenal building. It will really have a strong presence in the community. And then one that we're gonna try to include as we progress every month is on the last page, you'll see a picture which would really be the front of both of your buildings. Right now, you see a lot of dirt, but as we progress, hopefully those pictures will take shape and you'll get to see what the front door looks like for both of them. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Helen National.
I do have to say, I brought my mask home tonight. He was helping out on site and some of the people work, so you may see him in and around at the district office and on site when you go to visit. Just to follow up with some of the things that are gonna be happening as we go through the next few weeks, as the architect said, we are currently estimating Edna Elementary and I think the first estimate reconciliation is Tuesday. Hopefully, if everything goes well, we will be back here September with your sign up. You're supposed to get documents for the high school on 10/31 on Halloween and so in a couple of months from Halloween, we'll be back with that to sign up on as well. That is a much larger, much more complicated, so I might take another month. All your construction is ongoing, if you haven't done by, you know, by, I would like it, walls start going up, so it looks like a school. So at least by-bye. Thank you for that. We have no action items today, tonight. Hopefully we'll have one happen for next week. And I always like to go through the rest, actually I don't like to go through the rest deck, I have to. And any potential scheduling impacts, we start, are starting this whole cycle of estimate budget, I think so, and some negotiation on the next two schools. Allowances for the later packages and of course, the weather, we're taking perfect right now. We have the eighty-four thousand, eighty-four million dollars for the commitments. And currently, we're not agreeing on approved change orders, we're about a hundred dollars off, so I gotta go see if I have that made or something. We've got twenty-five hundred dollars in change orders that got approved. There's another fifty-five thousand that have come across my desk that are sort of in the negotiation phase. And that number will move, because we'll negotiate it and we'll talk about it and when it gets finalized, that's what I'll file on my calendar. Rick and I are talking pretty regularly and we're keeping up with, making sure we can center on the budget and we got the stage up system. And that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Garmin Miller.
I'm gonna give an update on the master plan for the usability study for the athletics. If you recall, we were here a couple of meetings ago and we presented an option that focused on the needs, wishes, and wants. If you recall, we had just that particular building that had those particular spaces. Now we added to that, we wanted to see some additional athletic space added to that and see how that would look with the spaces that were pretty. So the agenda for tonight, we're just, we're just gonna review the needs, wishes, and wants and then review the options and then come up with any questions that you have. So it's just kind of an update for you to see where we're progressing. If you recall, this is the needs, wishes, and wants list. Home locker room, visitor locker room, the female locker room, and then coaches' offices with restrooms and showers, a training room, and then kind of into the wishes, looking at the restrooms, concessions, and the bleachers. And now added to that, like I mentioned, is some additional multipurpose space for the athletics and see how that could interact with these spaces and what that facility might look like and where it could potentially be located. Right now, we're focusing a little bit more on the design, we're still working through some of the locations, we've got some options to show, but that's when we get with the committee and we start honing in on those potential locations and stuff. Option one is a thirty-one thousand square foot athletic complex is what I'll call it. The area right in here on the front of the facility is the locker rooms, training room, we have the officials' room. Over here on the right side, we've got concessions, concession storage, along with the full service toilet facility, ticket-taking, and some additional storage. As you come through, you can see we've got the visitor locker room, some storage for the exterior, the training room, male locker room, female locker room, and then the offices and associated toilet facilities. So this front part here is kind of what we would consider the field house, okay? That was kind of what we reviewed in those previous meetings. This box here is what we have since added and this is what we're considering the multipurpose space. Basketball court along with volleyball, five total batting cages with some cross sports additional as well. If you were to bring up the batting cages, you could use that for additional basketball space or multipurpose space, you will do, you know, many things in there, different agilities and so forth. And then the full track, sprint track in this round. So this has an opportunity right here, this particular space, to hit a lot of the athletics here at Southwest Looking. And then this field house area would be what is needed to replace what's gonna be missing once the high school moves to communication. We provided access from these locker rooms into this facility as well against these locations, including the official room, gonna be a business activity going on, potentially a volleyball match or basketball game or something like that, that the officials would get access there as well. Previously, if you recall, we had the concessions, restrooms, ticket-taking, and all that separate, okay? Now we have it as one facility. Okay, so you can go get your ticket, you can enter into the game, I'll show you an example here in a minute on how that works. We went one step further and we wanted to include an open area pavilion. Currently, we have, there is a pavilion out of the football field that I think has a lot of, a lot of meaning, okay? And rather than picking it up, moving it or, or what have you, we wanted to include that within this facility potentially. So really, the only difference between the two is this open area pavilion right here, everything else is, remains the same. The size of the building increased by three thousand per feet, so. As far as the location, here's your overall site and we were given the direction to focus on this area of the tennis courts. Okay, that was the first option that we wanted to look at. So we're looking at locating that overall facility near the tennis courts, it's not gonna take over the entire area. We wanted to push it a little bit closer to how the football field. But if you recall, I'll go to the snatch one, we'll zoom in a little bit, the ticket-taking area, the toilet rooms, and the concessions are all near, the bleachers here, if this remains the home site. Okay, the visitors would then continue to go over there, okay? Go back one and you can see that the fencing would just be right located here and then over here, okay? And then there's gonna be further discussion about what this existing building becomes and that would be a discussion of the committee meetings, because we do also wanna think about the soccer and the concessions and issues for that as well. Then the next option is to locate it at the end of the football field. And you can see the fencing that's located here, okay, to keep that. And then when you look at it and zoom up and plan, here's the pavilion area, I know it's, I apologize, it's kind of hard to see, but here's where that pavilion area is and it's almost located directly on top of the current pavilion. Okay, this is obviously open for discussion because we understand that the pavilion has some meaning, but we're trying to create that space within this pavilion. So having it on the end here, this would allow for the ends, or for the home site to be moved over to the other side of the football field, which allows now the access to the toilet rooms and concessions and stuff to be a little bit closer than being located here. This is nice because this allows the athletes to come out for football games or any other, if there's other sporting events going on on the football field, to come right out of the locker rooms right onto the field. So that, that works out really well from that perspective. Over on this side is the, what we're calling the female locker room, which will be allowed to use mostly for the soccer, gives them direct access right out to. It gives them direct access right out to the soccer fields. So again, this location, I prefer this location over by the tennis courts now for the simple fact that it's, has a better access for the athletes to get to the football field or other athletes that maybe, maybe use the field and less fan at the end. That's what we have right now. So the next step is, I talked with Mr. Janelle, we want to get the committees set up to start having some more meetings to be, to start narrowing down to the location, what it is we want to have in this facility exactly. So that we can get this constructed for the next five months.
Brian, why don't you let them know what the tennis court cost research did?
The tennis courts, to relocate the tennis courts to the high school, okay? Or in, you know, the site's almost been an issue over at high school. But if it's going to be located near the high school, the site work shouldn't be too bad because it's already been worked through. We're roughly looking at four hundred and eighty thousand to replace the six courts. And if there's, if we run into any site work, you know, we're potentially into it.
I have a question. You're going to always get a question about bathrooms from me. Every time. On that last picture, is there access for the non-inside the stadium sports, like soccer, to get to the restrooms, not the athletes, but the public?
They would require it to be located here because right now, this is the fencing.
Right.
Okay, and.
But it could be unlocked like it is now, probably. Okay, thank you.
Now, the other, Eric and I talked today, and we may investigate as well. If the home site is ultimately put over there on the other side, we may want to take this and have potentially near it, which brings the pavilion now a little closer to the home site. So. And then we should bring the restrooms over to that side, which will bring it closer to the soccer.
Which might be, which might make more sense anyhow. Thanks.
Can we talk about timeline a little bit?
Yeah.
That's still important. You know, we're talking about, what, August the twenty-one, having it built?
Yeah.
And how long is, how long do you need for construct, for drawing up and construction?
If you were to construct this, it would be a solid year. Plan, I don't know if you have any. Keep that on the map, but we have a separate facility for a school up north and it took eleven months.
What about you, drawing, bidding, that kind of process, you think?
Yeah, so the timeline, we would want to get the drawings done, have it ready, keep it out next spring. Because they can start construction in the June timeframe and then have it wrapped up in the following June. So basically, the football season comes.
Part of the reason I wanted to bring it up because we, you know, we're getting close to that decision time because we're going to need probably at least two to three months to issue bonds. You know, so we gotta get a design set, an estimate set, and then we need to go out and get the money. And that's going to take two, three months. And then finally give them the okay to move forward, then design it, and get ready, start building by June. I think we don't really have a lot of time. I think a decision needs to be made.
We need to stay aggressive with getting the committee meetings set up and getting the direction on where we can do this.
Yeah, because that's supposed to come back for board approval or bonds and all that stuff, so. I think we probably ought to make a decision by next couple of week meetings, really.
I was going to say, like, no, like, over December?
Because they probably, how long does it take you to draw it?
For something like this, it would take us probably two and a half to three months. So we have something by the December morning.
Well, we're going to need more than that because we need to issue, you could probably, while we're getting bonds, start drawing, so. But probably sooner the better, you know, either we need to start working on getting that set where we want to go and stuff.
And then the last one, the decision that would need to be made by the board is the construction delivery method. There's obviously several options that you can construct this building, the current schools or CMR, but you could also do single prime, which is another delivery method that could be used, was related to.
Kind of leaning towards single prime.
Sometimes we just decide to go with it.
Is essentially just you have a general contractor and all contractors are in that particular, or subcontractors to the local contractor, so. That's different than the old way of them on a multi-prime where you would have five to six different main contractors, so. Something that you can discuss.
You know, I think, I think single prime is what we really like to go, I think it's a good way of going, but you know, your board, who boards those as options? Bob, what's your opinion?
I used multi-prime before. It's, there's a little bit of conflict that could happen sometimes. If one person delays, the other person gets a little antsy. But if you have one person overseeing it, they can help coordinate all of that makeup at specific times. I agree, I think single prime and CMR is the only two really that you should probably run down.
So we'll continue to keep this living and give updates as needed over the next seven months. Let's work on that.
Sounds good.
Now, before he backs out, we wanted to make sure that we have all the input as, as we're moving forward. As we break from the whole group, if we move to more of an athletic review, that, you know, the board's voice is already, you know, here's some criteria to kind of fall into. But then also give the athletic department the ability to kind of shape it a little bit too. So is there anything else that you'd like to have Brian make sure that he takes forward? I think he's tried to meet all of your initial points, size-wise and so forth, but.
Is your thoughts, is he on the right track building-wise, is he on the right track location-wise? Do you have a ballpark number for that building as it sets down?
Yeah, we actually had one just a bit out last week. It's over in our area, the road. But right now, it's between three and a half and four million as well, we're estimating.
No, that's, that's the whole thing, whereas just the bathrooms.
They're really important.
A three million dollar bathroom.
No, I meant, because you basically are looking at it as two parts, right? We had talked about the front part and then possibly building a shell and adding some of the interiors later, but that would be a total price.
That's the, that's the whole ball of wax.
It doesn't include moving tennis courts, that's separate.
No, 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 not the tennis courts, but that's the whole.
That would be your construction now, it depends, will depend on if it's in this location and there's a lot of demolition.
Okay.
You know, that can add to that cost, demolition's not a part of it. That's basically to, you've got the pad ready and you're going to construct it.
We've got a pretty big ditch in the back there.
Yeah, I was going to say that's some drainage issues.
And the site works is, it's set works really, really hard.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff of the, of the unknowns, but to construct that building with a pad that's already there, three and a half to four million dollars is what we're asking.
And I'm assuming that does not include the furnishings for the, for the field house part of it, correct?
Correct.
That's not the track, not the basketball courts, not the volleyball courts, that's the shell part, okay?
Because that's what was originally discussed.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
During construction, would any of the other athletic facilities be affected? Would we not be able to use any of them, a lot of holes?
Yeah.
Just have a heads up.
If you did this particular option here during that twenty, twenty football season, you would have to bring in probably four jobs and temporary concessions. If you put it over on the, where the tennis courts are, where the tennis courts are obviously going to have a commission, but you would be able to use the rest of the facilities.
So for next fall, if we let with the option at the end of the end zone, next fall, we would have concessions and restrooms.
Yes.
But we'd still be able to use the turf of the football stadium, in and in both sides of sets of bleachers.
Yeah.
And soccer wouldn't be affected, tennis wouldn't be affected, we'd still be able to play tennis?
If you did this particular option, yeah, there, there may be some inconveniences with fencing that would cause, you know, people to probably walk, they would, you know, walk to get to the soccer field and stuff. Other than that, the field's pretty accessible.
And like, they'd be, people would be able to park right outside that fence?
That's what, that's going to be one of the next reviews that we, that we can do is to share how our landscape architect is going to be.
I, I'm sorry, I meant it follow-up to Lisa's question, like during that time when it's being constructed, will that be, area be parkable?
This area right up, notice.
Out there?
This is, there would be a fence probably located right around in here. So maybe some parking right along there, but over here, there would be issues.
And I know this is, I'm not sure, but that little tiny square, that's the discus area, so. Yeah, so during the spring, I don't know if there would be a thought to move that somewhere, but like during track meets, discus athletes would have to go all the way around that entire building, which is fine, but I didn't, I, yeah, I was just bringing that up. You can move that. Oh, I know, I know. They can fling that discus anywhere.
You can move that.
Oh, that's true too. You have one out by the softball field too, for discus. Yeah, I mean, yeah. I didn't know also during construction if that would be, if it's too close to the construction, if there were some in the spring.
I think we would be okay.
Okay.
Now.
She throws in my back.
If the contractor on board, you know, as far as where the trailer would be and where you're going to have your layups and stuff like that, you know, it may all want to be in here.
Yeah.
So again, we're just, we're kind of.
We are, yeah, yeah, grass park.
Stuff like that.
It's fun.
Yeah, Brian played baseball, so he doesn't know, he didn't probably know what discus is, he probably thought it was pizza or something.
It's going to be uncomfortable, a lot of places are going to be uncomfortable. I mean, that's, it's not going to be, just be uncomfortable here, it's going to be uncomfortable at the middle school and it's going to be uncomfortable at all the elements. I mean, it's going to be uncomfortable for a lot of places for the next few years, everywhere, right? I mean.
But you know, if you get it all done now.
It's right, exactly. I mean, it's, it could be uncomfortable for a lot of places for a lot of people and we're sorry, but that's, it's kind of.
One of the, I guess, one of the driving decisions moving forward, and we would like to know soon and later if you're going to move the home site to the other side of the field. Because that's going to change some things. So if you could decide that within the next.
I think that, if you're looking at me, and I know this should look down at me, I, I think that this was the issue that the board said that they would address.
Right, yeah.
The switching in the stadium is, is maybe a little bit more of a want. Now, if there's another group that steps up that says, hey, you're helping us with our concession stand area, we'll go out and help you fund for some bleachers, that might make the difference. But I think right now, if you're looking at me, if you're looking at Rick too, I think that this is what the board kind of talked about, making sure it's done. The reversal, I, I don't think we can make that decision right now unless a group steps up real fast.
So what are you talking about, what are bleachers, what'd you put in there? Eight hundred thousand or something, how, how much are bleachers?
I think four thousand, four hundred thousand aside.
It was a year and a half ago and the quote was about five hundred sixty thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're probably closer to seven.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I mean. I'm not speaking for the whole board, but speaking for candy, I'm not, I don't think that we're in the market to flip the bleachers right now.
You could put that much money in this, in this building.
Right, yeah, not when we need classroom space all over the place. And stuff for that area, I think it would, it would make more sense for us to buy the things for that shell if we're going to place, place, or you know, put money into something athletic.
And you know, as you look at the concession issue, I mean, I know that it doesn't take into consideration all the soccer, there would have to be some additional, but you, I've seen buildings that have undergone this, they've used tents, but in our particular case, we barricaded off. We have a cafeteria right there, and we have poison girls restrooms right inside the doors. That could be barricaded off and, and could be a nice location to go on a Friday night or whatever, a band show or something like that.
Yeah, that's true.
There is doable space, but they may want to bring in modulars or whatever for concessions. It's, it certainly has ways to, if you went with this one, that you can work around, I think. It'd be probably exciting for people to see it being done.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I would anticipate next month an update to this for the our landscape architect a master plan of the site and showing what potential partner could be done and some other potential options that we could review, just, just to get it in front of you.
Yeah.
We, we offered to master plan this site for you and that's what we'll do. You can take it or you can say, no thanks, you know, let's go, we want to show you those options while they're. I'll be next, next month.
Sounds good. Yeah, great, thank you very much.
All right, I guess one more question, do you need to know about pavilion now or not, or is that something the other committee will make a side decision on?
Yeah, do you, that's right, do you want to, like, location-wise, do you, do you want to make that decision?
Probably the same, well. Yeah, flipping of the home site bleachers, I mean, that's kind of an answer, but I guess an official answer. And then the location of where we want it, and then the talk about the pavilion being part of it or without the pavilion.
I'm, I'm leaning towards option two. I am too, yeah.
I think if you flip it.
Yes.
If you flip it, you're making it better for the soccer.
I agree.
It gives you the option to move your bleachers.
I agree, I agree, that's what I, I say, flip it. Mirror. Mirror.
So there won't, I mean, you're a little bit more of the, you're moving that pavilion, I know you understand that.
Absolutely.
I know there was some talk that first meeting that might be.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we'll work on that.
We still have the pavilion that's just being moved.
It's going to be a new pavilion, it's going to be a new space. Everything that's under the pavilion, within the pavilion areas.
The signs can be moved.
And everything you could essentially recreate it into a new space.
Yeah, right.
So that's the plan. So for next month, we'll get this, we'll get it flipped, we'll start attaching a little bit more detail and some color to it, give it a little bit more clarity.
Yeah.
For next month, implement these side options.
Perfect, sounds good, thank you. All right, requests to speak, we'll start with our agenda items. We have Teamsters Local for thirteen. Anybody here? No, okay, and Southwest Looking Education Association. You have anything tonight?
We're just looking forward to a productive and wonderful year.
As are we, thank you very much. All right, and the items that we moved up from non-agenda items, Mr. Bobo.
Good evening, my name's Mark Bobo and I'm a legislative consultant for the House School Association. And thank you all for allowing me to speak with you tonight. I'll make this brief because I know there's a lot already been done and you have more to do. But first, I want to thank you for allowing OSBA to serve as your association for the past sixty-four years. I truly appreciate that honor and we'll take it for granted. You have a big choice to make each year to serve with us and we feel privileged to be able to serve with you. We believe that the world is changing and the needs of our students are changing drastically and therefore that means the needs of board members is changing as well. And so in order to continue to be a relevant resource for our public schools, OSBA is making a concerted effort to align our decisions and our work and our resources to meet the need of our board members that you continue to support the one point eight million students that walk your, that walk the hallways of our public school. With that in mind, I want to draw your attention to a little packet I placed in front of you specifically. The Visionary Initiatives for Strategic Action, which is our VISA plan. It's designed to ensure that as our world and our students and our board members change, we are in a position to educate, challenge, and support you in your efforts. Board members need relevant timely information so that you often make a point decision regarding district policy, identifying a higher leadership, strategic, visionary work, community relations, and most importantly, student achievement. You'll notice inside the package that the VISA plan breaks down into four main pillars, which are governance, public relations, student achievement, best practices, and, excuse me, governance, public relations, student achievement, and best practices. And as an OSBA team, we've analyzed that there are about thirty strategies under those pillars by which we're trying to implement some tremendous change on behalf of our board members. And it falls under eight buckets, which would be student achievement, legislative, communication, program development, engagement, diversity, internal processes, and governance. We've literally taken this plan and have made this to be the driving force behind the decisions that we are making. There's a lot of information in there if you would like to go over it tonight. However, in your leisurely time, you might be able to enjoy some of the things that we are doing. But I do welcome you to look at that package and really understand some of the things that we're trying to achieve at OSBA. We do believe our membership is a valuable investment and we thank you for your continued confidence in us as we continue to support your efforts. As a, just a quick reminder, as you know, in November, November tenth through the twelfth is our Capitol Conference and I always want to welcome each of you to attend. Obviously, we are very excited about the workshops and the things that we'll be doing at the Capitol Conference. So we'd love to see each of you there. Very quickly on the legislative front, as you're very aware, House Bill one. Very quickly, on the legislative front, as you're very aware, House Bill one sixty-six was passed just a few days ago, and we're excited about some of the things we did see there, specifically the additional thirty million for school districts that have experienced enrollment growth, and have not seen the correlated funding increases as well. We're thankful for the vetoed three property tax-related provisions that would have had a negative impact on the school districts. Today, actually, we hosted the budget analysis discussion, and Peggy, Senator Peggy Lainer and Representative Blessing were both at the conference today, and particularly, there was a couple of things that were stated that I think are good things, particularly the wellness funds, as you're aware, in the annual budget, approximately six hundred and seventy-five million dollars were put in place for wraparound services to meet the needs of our students. Want to be aware that those dollars are going to be closely looked at how districts are using them, particularly, we want to be very careful that this first year, they were very particular about where we put those funds, because some of the Senate side are wanting to put some restrictions on how the funds are used going forward. So this year, please be, be very cautious on how those funds are used, and make sure that, we trust that you're gonna do the right thing, but just know, Big Brother's watching in that regard. And we also heard some positive things in regards to the Cuff Patterson School Funding Formula, they were very transparent to say that they are confident that something will be passed. Don't know exactly what it will look like, how it's going to work out for our school districts, and I know we're all totally at the feeling of how it will look, but Peggy Lainer's, Representative Blessing was very optimistic, Senator Lainer was a little more reserved, but she is, has made it priority number one to make sure at the Cuff Patterson village is really looked at and see how we can get something passed to help our school districts. So I thought those are two very encouraging things from today. And lastly, I do wanna bring your attention to the call for nomination brochure that is in your packet, please disregard the date, because what I wanna talk about, we're descending the deadline for that, which is the OSBA ambassadors for public education, I'm not sure if you all are aware, but sometimes public education does not necessarily get the best story told about it, and OSBA wants to take the lead in making sure that we have the right narrative about public education in our communities. So we are looking for members of boards of education who will be willing to serve as an ambassador, which, and it's a very, it's not a time-consuming commitment, but it's just simply giving you the opportunity to make some presentations in your local community, to contact your local legislators, and we will be helping you facilitate these things. That is something that you're interested in, yes, it's very personal to me because it's my committee, so I'm encouraging everyone who I go with the board members to serve. If you have any interest at all, please let me know, I've left my card and my information, please let me know, I'll be happy to work with you and ask you to serve with you. Again, OSBA is thankful for your continued support and your efforts that you're doing here at Southwest Looking Local, and we appreciate the opportunity to continue to service you. Again, thank you for your time tonight, and I'm excited about all the wonderful things that are happening, but most important, Mr. Alexander Sworst, that was awesome, stayed in first place in the state's championship, so thank you all for your time.
Thank you. We have Alicia Kidd. If you will speak into the microphone, list your name and your address, and you have five minutes, and we would normally, we will not address you afterwards, okay? All right, thank you very much.
My name is Alicia Kidd, I live at forty-seven sixty-one New York Road Southwest in Casco. Thank you for allowing me to share some of my thoughts with you tonight. I wanna share with you some of the struggles of having a child with dyslexia at Southwest Looking Schools. My daughter Jessie is nine years old, she has struggled with reading, comprehension, and spelling her entire life. We've been told year after year by her teachers that she would outburden this issue, that puzzled us and the teachers, too. No one really knew what was going on. This year, as parents, we pushed for Jessie to have further testing, and we took her to a highly qualified and respected neuropsychologist, Dr. Stephen Guy, Ph.D. Dr. Guy and his colleague, Dr. Marla Arnold, Ph.D., diagnosed our daughter with dyslexia as well as an anxiety disorder that's likely exacerbated by the dyslexia. Dyslexia is a specific learning disability that makes it difficult for children to learn to read. These children are not without hope. There's one in five children who have dyslexia, but with early intervention and specific instruction, it enables them to learn to read and reach their full potential. I was excited to finally have the answers for the reasons that Jessie has struggled with reading despite our efforts at home and her teacher's efforts at school. I was eager to share this diagnosis with the school officials so that we could work together as a team to help our daughter succeed in school. As parents, we put our trust in Southwest Looking Schools to provide the proper support for Jessie. I was really surprised to be met with opposition from the principal, Mr. Pratt, the school psychologist, Brittany Fleming, and Jessie's teachers. The school staff explained that they simply didn't believe the doctor's diagnosis, and instead offered other reasons for Jessie having poor reading skills, such as being young, immature, not trying hard enough, or maybe that she just started school too early. In an earlier meeting with Ms. Fleming, we were told that some kids just aren't good students and that they will struggle all the way through school. She reasoned that this was probably the case with Jessie. I'm sorry. Schools stood on their position that they did not believe Jessie has a learning disability, and that she is smart and performing perfectly average among her peers, yet interestingly, they recommended that she be retained. These comments and excuses did not make a lot of sense to us as parents, who know exactly how hard our daughter has tried in school, how desperately she wants to excel, how smart she is, yet as Dr. Guy explained, she just simply isn't able to show how bright she is, because her dyslexia is making it difficult for her to read, complete assignments, and score well on tests, as well as cause her quite good of anxiety. As mom and dad, we were hoping for the specialized instruction for Jessie, still are, especially since this was not caught earlier on in her school career. We are very disappointed and saddened to realize that in Southwest Looking Schools, it seems to us, there's either a lack of understanding about dyslexia, or an unwillingness to change the way children are taught to read. Dyslexia is a very real studied condition of the brain, and there is scientific evidence to prove it. My question is why, instead of embracing a qualified neuropsychologist's diagnosis, why would the school insist nothing is wrong? And how many other kids has this happened to? How many other kids are being left behind and either unfairly retained or pushed further along without being helped? These students are people, they are our future, and they have a right to an education and a school system that will treat them as if they have value.
One minute, okay.
Again, one in five students struggle with dyslexia. In just a few days, school will open, and you have five schools with dozens of classrooms in them, with twenty-something students in every classroom. There are statistically three or four children in every one of your classrooms that struggle with dyslexia. That is a lot of kids. My hope is that you will think about them, change what you know about dyslexia, and find a way to help these struggling students. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we have number four, we have approval of minutes from July eighteenth. I need a motion for that, please.
Motion approval, second.
Any discussion? No, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, that passes. We have number five, A and B, the financial report, get a motion for those, and then we can discuss.
Move five A and B.
Second.
All right, discussion, Mr. Jones?
Copy your clue, this is the executive summary for the month end, July thirty-first, obviously, it's the very first month of the new fiscal year, so there's not a lot of information, the budget information is not available yet, we're working on that. Probably the biggest thing to note is our first income tax settlement came in for the fiscal year, which is always our largest, and it came in about seven percent higher than last year. So it was, it was a big jumper from one year to another, so obviously, that's definitely a good start for our income tax. I know there's still some concern with the economy, maybe heading into recession in the next year or two, but right now, the income tax looks good for our school district. Other than that, it was a fairly routine month, and really nothing out of the ordinary. The other thing is the then-announced certificates, we always have issues with timing of ending a fiscal year and starting a new fiscal year, so these are ones that June per sort date, during the invoice date, July per sort date, they're over three thousand dollars, so they do require the board to approve them. I'm glad to answer your question about the then-announced certificates, but again, it's mainly all just a little bit of timing issues going from one fiscal year to another.
What are we buying from Looking Heights?
That's basically the services for the food service director.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Which we have till the end of August, we can just paint off her.
All right, any more discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, that passes. We have number six, A through L. Motion for one or all of those?
A little motion approval A through L.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Just real quickly, again, our enrollment is really, coming in really hot right now. We've had to add a few positions, just a special one tonight, I know that our group met last year, but we are into hiring an additional bus driver for the special needs run, and I mentioned our ELC, we had talked about that to try to limit it at the time. There's another regular rate bus driver that's been hired, and some monitors in addition to that, and I think that we're keeping a very, very close eye on enrollment in our kindergarten, but, you know, for the first time, we don't have official numbers, but we're well over three hundred in almost all of our classes. Kindergarten's gonna be really, really high, maybe, maybe showing up next month with an additional teacher and that, depending on how many actually enroll the next week, so.
Do we have a class, do we have a classroom? We do, if we need it, okay.
I mean, we were, we were sitting pretty good, but then this last minute push, I think people get in, well, they see the yellow buses or whatever they might see, so they start to show up and register, and it's putting us very tight on a lot of the numbers, and of course, we're working with the association to try to keep those numbers. I'm just saying that Rick's saying how nice that was, but we may be cutting into that if we need to hire some teachers. So that's something that we'll be very careful about, but we are taking a look at. I mean, as personnel, would you like to add anything? Just wanted to make you aware of that.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Just the definite Y, our highest class right now is like three hundred and sixty-two students.
Pretty good, so.
Is that the eighth grade?
Three hundred and sixty-two, which grade?
Third grade.
Third grade.
All right, number seven, we have business items, wanna take those one by one?
Yes.
Okay, seven A, athletic startup money, we need a motion to approve the startup money for middle school and high school athletics.
Motion approved, seven A, second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, that passes. Seven B, the gifted handbook, and a motion to approve, and then discussion?
I'll move to approve.
Second, all right. Discussion? He has to go to the bathroom.
I didn't mean to embarrass him.
He's done.
He's out, he's gone. All right, discussion?
I have a few things.
Go ahead.
I didn't know if anyone else wanted to go first.
I have a few, but I'll let you go first.
So I didn't get this new one until just before, so all my notes are on the old version, but the first thing that I noticed, or not the first thing, but one of the things that I didn't see in the new version or in the old version, is on the change document, it says on page thirty-eight, additional information regarding how we support students that are not served. I couldn't actually figure out which page thirty-eight was in the old, but in the new, thirty-eight talks about habits of mind. So is that how we're serving students not served with habits of mind, or is there a different part for that? Okay.
If you wanna go ahead, I can look while I have a question.
One, without having looked, looking at the new version, I noticed before that a lot of the sections, the section headers, they were like titled something different than how they were listed in the table of contents, it was a little more of a formatting thing, but one of these, I have, I have to find the example, but it's easier for me to do it this way, I'm just saying.
This is the new one.
But my notes are on the old one. Wait, where is my old table of contents? Hold on, I'm sorry. While you're looking, I, did we not approve a handbook last year?
No, it is only typically, there was a committee that completely revamped the handbook two years ago, and so this year, it was revamped because of the committee changes of service is primarily, so the committee's work, which was most of it, that's why it's only corrections for service replacement, I mean, it's because of, it wasn't a committee, it was just the superintendent's committee that had changed service.
And the handbook that was completed was probably the initial one back in two thousand, was it two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen?
The one that was approved in two seventeen was like a complete overhaul, and nothing really looked at in the ten years or so, it was, it was.
Okay.
It was almost a complete, like, start from scratch.
Okay.
So teachers were involved, community, parents, myself, and we completely revamped that over the course of the year, so we were really due, we usually like every three years or if the state can help with something significantly different, they changed the handbook.
Okay.
And then otherwise, replacements, change, what services we're gonna offer, they will be here.
All right, I found it, all right, so for example, in the table of contents, it says on page twelve to fourteen, characteristics of gifted children, but on that header, it says characteristics, characteristics for helping to identify gifted students, so it's just a little bit of a matching situation. And then also on page twenty-seven, it goes from that huge section of overexcitabilities in gifted children with all the subsections, and then there's a section in the document that says gifted services, but in the table of contents, it just skips that and goes straight to elementary and middle school placement. So I, I just would maybe request like a double check of all of the table, because I'm kind of a. So I, I just would maybe requested like a double check of all of the table, cause I'm kind of a.
Yes, and, and I can definitely go through and make sure the titles, there were self communities in that committee and like in the cells. You can definitely make sure that we're both familiar.
And there.
It'll leave you to understand if it's aligned. I think the gifted services specific, that's kind of like the introductory paragraph to the placement. So I think I can move it to the top.
Yeah, it's at the top. I just think that because it's the same way as everything else is listed, it looks like its own section. And there's just a few spots where, you know, titles of positions need, you know, should be capitalized and not um. And then um like the flow charts, like some of the boxes are overlapping. I don't know if that's intentional or, or not.
On the new one, cause that's one of the things that changes, the image chart or something.
It just, I want to make, make sure whatever document we present to parents, it looks like a nice, clean document that you know. I can't find it.
And we tried that's a O D E.
Yeah.
Chart. So we tried to make it look a little bit better than it did in the last one, but it's, that's outdated kind of. But we can try and see if we can try to do something with it.
And just a general question, is this document for parents? Is it for students? Is it for staff?
Yeah, and, and that's something we have talked about. Right now it serves multiple purposes and I think it, it doesn't, it would be easier next time where you do, cause it will be up in to uh we, what we looked at is maybe we need to divide it out and have something for teachers separate. Um the parent information is required. We need to have, you know, information for parents like twice successful students and, and those kinds of things. And so it's designed, the old handbook was, I think, over a hundred pages. So this was like a cut in half where people were very um committed to their sessions of that book. So to get it down to fifty, it was still larger than it be, it needs to be. So I anticipate it getting slim more and maybe some things are specific for a teacher, uh separate than the new handbook.
Cause I, I, I mean, this is just an opinion, but if I'm a parent of a gifted student, there's a lot of stuff in here that I don't need. Or I could probably get on my own just by Googling, cause it looks like that's, some of the stuff was just put in like, like it's been there forever, like you said, but um.
Absolutely. I agree. I think it can streamline and maybe the teacher resources in this country will be shortened. But we split it in half. It was kind of, you know, made as a compromise, we moved from a hundred and something to fifty.
Okay, oh, I think that's about all I have. But like I said, most of it was formatting.
I, I, I got a bunch and it starts with the fifty however many pages. It kind of amused me that the high school handbook, which talks about everything under the sun, C tech, dress code, you name it, vaping, drugs, up, is, correct me if I'm wrong, forty-eight pages. And that includes the alma mater and the board and the names. This is, this is way too much. It's crazy too much. Um I think items within this, as Ms. Spindler said, is extremely confusing. People are referred and then they're nominated. Which one are they referred or nominated? I don't know. Um I, we have worked intelligently to get away from labeling students. And in throughout this entire document, we're twice exact students. We are gifted students. We are teachers for the gifted, which drives me back, we're not teachers for the gifted, we're teachers to students. We have special ed, regular ed, gifted students in our classroom. We're not gifted teachers. Um we've got definitions in here that are repeated multiple times. Uh do we need to tell parents what they should be looking for with their gifted children and perhaps emotional disturbances? I don't think that should be our job. Do we need to discuss the pros and the cons and characteristics of behaviors? Is that something that we need to have in here? I don't think we need to have this. I think a lot of the information in here is information that you would be providing to your teachers for training. I don't, I, I think it's fair to say at this point in time that the board members are being asked specific questions about gifted services in this district right now. If I have to tell somebody to look at this, I'm going to get killed. This is not a handbook. This is crazy. And I, I mean, I think that perhaps it needs to go back to committee. The committee says, you know, do we need other people to get involved? Do we, obviously we need the teachers involved, we need their input. But we need to create a streamlined document. And if it's two documents, we had need to have for our education system, then we do. If it's another document for teachers, we do. Both can be, both can access either document, but this is, this is crazy talk right here.
And that would be my recommendation. Some of the charts when you're referring like expected and expected behaviors and those kinds of things are because any, anyone can make a referral. A neighbor could call us and say.
I saw that.
My child is gifted, the child itself have come herself, good, parents could. So I think a lot of them were in the handbook. If I help parents see what's the difference between a bright child and a gifted child, but I completely agree. And that would be my recommendation as well. And obviously that's the direction we will take is streamlining it. And probably it will be some teacher resources separate. And maybe at this point now we have online, there's different places we can provide those to teachers. And then more of a streamlined for parents and then maybe um some resources if you want to, like credible resources. If you are concerned about a specific issue, I think that, you know, I think a lot of this, like I said, it's ten years since it's been updated. A lot of this is before everyone was on here and everything was available and those kinds of things. So I do think we need to streamline significantly.
Um one of the discussions, it talks about um not identifying all students who are gifted. I already changed it for you. Uh may not be served. Um and then it says where more students have the same data, where it's basically where it's a tie. I'm on page twenty-eight of fifty-four. Um that will use other factors. Is that supported by board policy?
Yes.
It is?
So we, we would have to look at a break. So if you look at your, at the placement criteria there, the next thing you would look at underrepresented, is that what you're looking at on page twenty-seven?
Yeah.
The more students have the same data, the replacement of those. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Yes. And, and that is just best practice, especially when we're.
So it's not supported in policy?
What policy you refer to?
Do we have a board policy that says if two students are the same, we're going to use these factors to determine who gets placed?
I don't think that any of the specific criteria just says we will have established criteria for placement.
I don't think we do either.
Yeah, and should we?
Right, I mean, I mean, how do we support that? How do I go to a parent and they say, well, I know, I have twins. Ava and Riley tested the same. Well, we picked Riley because why? Or, or Ava and Wojo tested the same. Well, we picked your son. How do I know that's going to be consistent?
We picked your daughter because females are underrepresented.
Well, I was just going to get my son because we're struggling.
No, this is more, for example, if you're gifted and if you look at round um seven, and if you look at round seven and what we run into a lot is a kid is reading ID. Like we're down to the last two spots and that's usually round seven is where placement is going to end. And we would look, for example, at what is the non-gifted identification score category? Um is there anything unusual going on with the student? For example, if the student is ADHD, then we are not going to have as accurate data on that, in that child. If we know they have dyslexia, dyslexia or something else that would be a, a considering factor. Um but for placements this year, we just went with um the data and it was broken by COG scores. So if you were in the same round, it is by your COG score, the highest COG score. Which is actually, if you look, this is what was added was the student's cognitive scores when we're looking. Cause that is as moving actually to what you're saying, let's just use data and wherever everybody falls, they fall. And so um if that's what the board's desire is, we could just say it's broken by student data and take out that statement.
Well, I think we need something that's consistent so we can say that all people were given a fair equal chance, not based on.
Yes, and that would do that. That would do that. And that's what we're moving as a district anyway. We had a very free for all, like people not gifted and gifted services, so we're really streamlined.
Um my other question is Kathy's reading that. On that page previous, it talks about uh a grade level basically being filled and that per state law families will be notified yearly if their student will or will not receive services. When is that done? How is that done? For example, this year, when were families notified?
Um families were notified and this year we ended up trying to incentivize the student portal. And so some families got their name of their teacher before the service letters. Typically those service letters are given with their, when they come to get their uh schedule or their homework assignment. And so depending on the building, they've gotten throughout the week. But part of the confusion that occurred this year was because the app would that incentive for the portal. And as far as why we don't do it earlier, um in the past, like four years or further, parents used to get this letter that started with congratulations, your child is going to get this program. We really have tried to move to, we're looking at your best placement of your child. Who is most in need for something different in their services? So that letter seemed to be like it was something, it's where your child needs to be educationally. It's not a, a, you born in the sweepstakes. So we really tried to streamline instead of a letter saying congratulations, it is part of their place. But just like we notify, you know, if you're getting other services or other things. And so they pick up their schedule or the homework teacher and they get a letter that says the child is gifted, getting gifted services. What type of service or they are not getting gifted services? And as far as why couldn't it be a little bit earlier? I mean, you could do, just send the letters as they are mailed.
When do you find out? When, when do you know that somebody will be gifted for the following year?
That's what I was about to say. We had actually several gifted students registered in the last week or two. So we, I think we need to last change um to our advanced service, our COG service uh this week. Because we had, and we actually had to have a new student move in and we had to bump the student out to look into that data. And then we found out a young lady is in the DOD register and we didn't know. So fortunately we were able to bump that student back in. So with so many people coming in and out of, of the district, if we, we really did wait as long as we could to try to see who should be served.
I have a weird question.
Yeah, so then we're not serving the same, so then we're not serving.
Why are we not serving all the gifted students?
That's a great question. Um it is a kind, I, I'll give you kind of a simple answer and a little bit more complex. Um a big reason we are not serving all the gifted students is the resources. Um we added a gifted intervention specialist. We wanted to go to resource or go to an inclusion model. There are requirements of how many minutes that teacher has to be with those kids. Um there's requirements about how much support they get from our coordinator. There are requirements about how many minutes and there's a maximum of the number of kids you can have on a case load. So we would need another gifted intervention specialist if we were going to try to serve more students. The other part of that question is when we are, when we're just filling classes and in the past, if you were just hiring students, you were placed. There really isn't a lot of research that if you are less than a one sixteen cognitive ability, you're in an average range for how your brain works, how you process. There isn't a lot of research that says that student needs something different. So I, I don't know of a district that says every single kid gets served. Because we have students, um for example, we have a, a, a mother who, and every woman's best for their kids. I understand it, you know, gifted kids. I understand it. We all gifted, not gifted. Whatever we have, our kids are individuals and have needs and we're all worried about them. So I understand um her concern, but this child has always been kind of the last placement when we had the self-contained classroom um for the enrichment. And the reason he always slipped in, cause it's not the same kids every year in that enrichment class. The reason he slipped in in particular was because kindergarten, in first grade, in the spring of his first grade year, he took the MPG, which is the test our kindergartners and first graders give. And for a few years, you could, you could label somebody gifted based on that test, but that test is read to you. So how are you identified gifted if it is read to you? But for a few years, that was allowed by the state. It is not now. We do not identify those K ones. The current sixth graders, the last group that could be identified on that MPG because that has been stopped all year. And so this mom is correct. That child is always identified gifted in reading. But it was on a test that has since been proven invalid. It over identified middle-class families and families that read to their children all the time because it was an oral test. And then that mother's child also was identified math this fall of his second grade year. And his scores have been eighty, seventy cents. So, but when we're looking at our criteria, he was gifted in math once and he was gifted in reading based on that MPG test. So when we're looking at placements and we have class numbers to fill and we were looking at who went last in, he had two IDs. So that's how he slipped in, you know, each year. Now the other difference going into middle school is we get another cognitive test with all of the kids. So for placements for second, third, fourth and fifth grade are those second grade contests that everyone in the district, every kid in the district takes that contest. And then parents can request or make referrals um for their children to be tested or teachers sometimes make referrals. We do have some kids who have been tested again, but fifth grade, every kid in the district is tested again for co- cognitive ability. And we use that score to place. So we always have, this is nothing new that switched to middle school. Mister Brown, I remember me, we always have kids that suddenly are COG ID and, and so that's going to shuffle. We suddenly have a kid with higher data on that current score, that recent score, that's going to cause some shifting.
Right, I under- I understand, but I guess so those kids that no longer are identified, they're not anymore identified as gifted.
They are always. In the state of Ohio, if you hit it once, you are always gifted.
That's where I was confused.
Never, and it's a unique thing to Ohio. We're one of, of very, I would not check like the last year or two, but we're one of very few states that are once gifted, always gifted.
Gotcha.
Most states have most recent three, three years of data, which is, if you look at our placement chart, it is most recent data. So the last three years, if they had hit gifted score, then they would be um placed in gifted clusters, for example, in sixth grade.
Okay, so I have, I have just a question. So this kid who's accidentally gifted from.
Who's that?
Nope, just wait, just accidentally gifted from kindergarten and second grade. And then is accidentally placed in the inclusion class for third, fourth and fifth grade. And then is shoved out for sixth grade. He did well in third, fourth and fifth grade, right?
Okay.
In those classes, he was able to do well in the third, fourth and fifth grade classes with his peers that were not accidentally gifted.
Okay, um first of all.
Not on testing. I'm not talking about his maps test, cause I don't care about those right now. I'm talking about actually in the class.
Okay, I, I appreciate, I understand your question.
Yeah.
And so I will try to answer it.
Okay.
Follow up. Um he's not accidentally gifted. As a school district, we have to follow O D E's rules.
I understand that.
If you've been identified gifted, the state of Ohio, he is always gifted.
Correct.
Um we have a lot of rules regarding placements um from O D E. And one of the rules is we cannot consider teacher recommendations. We cannot consider the state testing, which I always find slightly ironic. They say it's not valid. Um we cannot consider grades.
Okay.
We cannot consider any of that information. And parents always, that's really hard for parents to understand cause they'll get a state test that says you're advanced. And the same people that are telling their child, they are advanced, they're saying, that does not say that kid is above average or above grade level or anything. And so we are very limited in what we can consider and do. And I always give the example to parents, like when I talk to parents, I say, we have all been in a classroom. Our teachers do our best, teachers across the country, not just in South America, to make grades, show what you know and you don't know. But we have all been in classes or definitely I have. And I say, where I've been in class and I have gotten a B in that class. And I have learned more than I have learned in anything that year. And I have worked harder than I've ever worked for that class and I got a B. and I have worked harder than I've ever worked for that class and I got a B. And I have been in classes where I've gotten A and I don't feel like I've learned very much at all. So that's part of the reason why the state says you cannot consider, you know, grades. Because grades are really hard to standardize. That's why they use standardized tests. So the tests that get you into gifted are the same test that somebody in California or Tokyo takes. And so that's why they're trying to take the subjectivity out of it so that it is something that is standardized. So that is why, but it is very difficult for parents when they get that advanced or accelerated. They think that means gifted. And, and the state of Ohio says it does not, or they think that means they're way above grade level.
I guess I'm not concerned about the labels so much. Because I don't, because you know what? You know what? I have two very different kids and I don't really care what they're labeled personally. But for, I guess I'm concerned about how we're servicing this kid at this point. Because, and how we're servicing all our kids, I guess. Because I'm concerned that if we're, and maybe this has gone a way different direction than the handbook, but I'm, I'm still concerned, I'm concerned that we're going backwards for kids.
Because that's my initial question.
I'm concerned we're going backwards for kids.
Page thirty-eight, how are we supporting students not served? And I don't see-
Yeah, and I guess if you're, if you're-
It is only a-
And I understand they're not standardized, but if, if you've got a kid who's continued to perform, you, we all know you're kind of, that's what we know about special ed, right? You're going to always perform to the, up here. If you put this kid with these kids up here, they're going to come up to here. We always know that, right? I mean, that's, that's best practice. So-
Part of this, to answer your question about how they're getting served in the middle school in particular, this is one of the things we look at. When, and this is one of the things that committee looked at. If you are pulling off exactly what you said, you want that classroom to be at a high level of achievement. So if you're pulling off too many children, then you are doing that. I talked to several parents this week who said, my child has to be on an honors. They have to be on honors team. And I said, we don't have teams in the middle school. And they said, well, my child is so upset because they're on the dumb team. And that just really bothered us as, and teachers and administrators. That's not what we want the middle school to be. And it was the kids on the honors team saying this to the kids on the regular team. And so the middle school and the middle school administration can speak for themselves, but you know, we went to having longer reading and math periods in sixth and seventh grade. The teachers are working on flexible grouping, you know, that's two classes of kids. So the high kids can be grouped together and they can get different instruction, you know. And so there's a lot of things and works that will support the needs of those, those kids. And the kid, the parents that called me and that we talked through that process and talked to the middle school, I won't say they weren't thrilled. Some of them were like, I get it. Some of them were like, okay, I understand. But I think this is probably the same thing as, I was in a district where we went from special ed being really, they were in other rooms and moved to an inclusion model with co-teaching. And it was scary for everyone. It was scary for those parents that are like, they're not going to get as much as they got when they were over here by themselves. And I really believe the, the middle school staff's done a lot of work with this. You know, how are we going to divide? What does that instruction look like? How can we support, you know, the elementary, we're pushing for services? I just think it's really scary for gifted parents to believe that their child's going to get what they need in that regular classroom.
Parents that have kids in the gifted program?
That have had kids in the self, you know, because now you're saying-
Yeah, yeah, our gifted parents, parents that have kids, students in gifted program.
Students that have been identified as gifted and their parents are very concerned that they have been self-contained gifted set and have succeeded and achieved. And now they're going into a classroom that they have to trust, just like when we put special ed kids from a resource back into, that their needs are going to be met. And I believe the teachers, I mean, have talked to them, they're prepared. Mr. Brown has had PD and conversations, you know, regarding how they're, they're going to be supported in a regular classroom.
I think it's, it's a, it's definitely a subject that I think is, there's a fine line because at this age with the middle school and you, and they're no longer receiving services they've always gotten and they've always scored high. And then, oh, sorry, you're not good enough anymore for this. It's a huge confidence killer. And then they, they just, you take that risk of saying, oh, well, I'm not smart enough, so I might as well not try. It's happened. It's happened to one of my kids, but-
Yeah, it is, it really is difficult. And we had a lot of conversations behind the scenes to rip off the Band-Aid, to phase it in. You know, at the end of the day, the building administrators, it was also in their call. And so some grade levels, you know, phase, some grade can kind of rip it off the Band-Aid. There is no good solution. I will say there is support to say, being that lowest kid in that class does a lot to your self-esteem too. Like it really hurts your self-esteem when you're in all these high achievers and you feel like you don't, you lose perspective of that regular kid. So some of those kids going to that regular class might actually get more perspective of where their levels are. They are bright kids. They are above-average kids. But when you're with these kids that have cognitive abilities so high, that can get to indicate it.
Which is, that's just why I would, I'm super curious about the additional information regarding how we are serving students not served.
It is, you asked that and it is just, I found it and now we move on. But it is not much. I can look to, what are the other questions? Um, it is not much. It just basically says the teachers will be notified if the students are gifted. You know, they can reach out to me for help.
Oh, I see it.
I will look again if it requires-
It's not really-
If it didn't happen, then we move on.
It's not really in that, is it on page thirty-five at the very bottom?
Yeah, it's somewhere at the bottom.
It's just not, um-
It just basically says-
Oh, yeah.
The teachers will be notified and ask parents to work closely and look their, yes.
So how, how are, are we doing anything to like, like quality control to make sure that something's happening, other than just a notification?
Yes, if they're not, if they're not in gifted services, then those are, the administrators are, are responsible for extraction and differentiation in the class, you know, classrooms in their buildings. So that's primarily at the building level. What I always encourage parents is, you know, give the parent, the teachers a few weeks to get to know your kids and pre-assess. So like they're not going to differentiate, have bag-o's differentiation by Friday next week. I said, but if you don't, you need, reach out to a teacher because you know your kid best. You need to say, you know what? He went to NASA camp and he knows science. What can we do different? And if you don't get what you need from the teacher or you feel like you and the teacher need more help, then go to your building administrator. And then I say, they're still gifted. So if you go to the building administration, you've talked to the teacher, you're really concerned, then reach out to me, you know, as well. And I guess the one other thing I would say is, is it's very difficult. And I take very personally the placements. These are kids I know, you know. So I think of the team, it's really difficult for me because I know that John Smith not getting served or it's, it's whatnot. But I try to keep in mind, when John Smith is not served, another child in our district is being served. And unless we're going to expand services, you know, it is, if one goes in, one goes out. You know, because we're in capacity in multiple grades. At fifth grade, we're completely full in gifted services classrooms, you know, so. But I struggle with this. I don't, I, I, if I could serve the whole world, I, I mean, I'm a gifted advocate. I would serve everyone. We have to decide where do we most need those needs. And I think this placement chart, I think the 116 is a clear data-driven. And we have not had it in this district. But it's a big change for the families in our district who have had students identified as gifted.
I have one last question. On the identification plan, it says the rules in OAC thirty-three oh-one fifty-one fifteen that there are a list of assessment instruments that come from that approved list.
Yes.
If I go to that rule, will I see the total list? And if not, what, what assessment tool do we use?
Yes, and, and two different things. And the reason we are gay is because that changes every year. And actually currently, ODE does not have enough assessment tools for any school in the, in the state to be compliant with the law. And that's one of the reasons why you're getting this now is because we were hoping that that would come out and we would know what that is. Currently in our district, whole grade, we use OSAT, which is an approved thing. Our math testing for reading math, the kids take three, two or three times a year, depending on the, the year. And we also then use the Terranova for science and social studies in fifth grade. The ACT identifies for the juniors that when they all took that, you can get identified COG if you get a composite, a ninety-five percent or higher. And also individually, you can in any subject area. It also counts the kids that take ACT on their own individually, the SAT, the PSAT. And the INU is one of the tests we use as an alternative. That's our first go-to for school group in March, the spring evaluation.
Yeah, so we, we will use any of those things?
We, yes. And actually, part of the concern is, for example, the state has not given us anything for any ESL students. We approved, so we, we do not have a tool to assess any ESL student in reading right now. And, and they keep saying, this has been like nine months, they say. When everybody said, wait, you didn't give us a, a tool for visual and performing arts? We have to identify them or we work hard, pulls it out as a separate, like really hurts us? We don't have an assessment for any of the school year. And so everyone is frustrated. I got a, OHTC is the state advocacy organization. I just got like a legislation update on that and they're, they're working on it. But right now, they, the state is saying that the companies did not provide what they wanted. So they could not be evaluated to determine. The companies are saying the tech, the process was so cumbersome and such a short window, there was no way they could, could do so. And this has actually been more than a year going on. Because last year, the solution was, well, we're just going to like use the old for one more year and we'll fix it this past year. They haven't fixed it. So right now, we're waiting to hear. I have an ODE regional meeting on the fifth. ODE comes around like to the state. And so I'm hoping by then, they will give us some kind of a timeline or an idea of what that looks like. But I'm, I watch it religiously because we're all curious to see what they're going to do.
Okay, thank you. Kathy's done, all right. Do you have anything?
I, I just want to go back. Among all of the other things that I talked about, board policy, items like that. Ms. Paul, you mentioned that students are calling other students out, basically the, you know, I don't want to be in the, we are accessories to that by using language that we use. Students with gifts and talents in the gifted handbook. So we're making reference that only students that are gifted have gifts and talents. We are twice exceptional students. We are gifted students. We are teachers of the gifted. We are allowing that to happen with those words and that's unacceptable.
Would you like me to go through? You're right, I think we've become much more cognitive, that we refer to the person first and then whatever else we want to say about them. So I definitely, if you, I would, I would wholeheartedly like to. It was just literally, I did not look at what the committee had done. I only looked at the changes I had to make. So this is a few years ago and some of it was a period of development. So I think I would add this idea to change all that to the person first because I, I haven't, I agree with the person first is the goal.
I would actually like to, I would like to see it as two. I would like, I would like to see it as-
I think it needs an overhaul.
Two pieces. You know, a parent-
Complete overhaul.
Piece and the teacher piece is separate. That's, and just, and really is the parent piece, just how do we, how do we, what is our criteria? A five-page document. Here it is, and that's it.
That's actually, I have a document-
Or, you know, a four-page, you know, two-page document.
And I have a working document where things come up over the years. I have in there and in my, well, the committee will help format it. And obviously, what the board has given us some guidance in that process is I think anything that is about placement, like the legal things first and then maybe some parent resources greatly cut down and a teacher document separate in a different format, I think would be a much better document for us.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that the gifted handbook is tabled.
Yeah, I think that's what we should do too. I would, I will, I will second that.
Hopefully they come back in a nice revised version.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
If that passes, we'll have to vote to pull that off the table at a later date. How about seven C, delegating authority related to the CFAP construction project?
Why does it say I introduced this?
Because you, that's how the attorney wrote it. That's how they write all the resolutions. So Kate, what's, as you know, Mr. Jao will be leaving us as our superintendent and moving on to a new project administrative role January first. This current resolution basically deals all with the high school facilities project and who has authority to do change orders and approve things like that. And right now, that authority still rests with superintendent. So once he basically leaves, it stays, it moves on to Casey and then it moves on to interim or whoever knew us after that. I just, we wanted to make sure the board's feeling is it should always stay superintendent? Do we move that to the project administrator, that authority? Or do you do superintendent and their, or their designee to make those basically? I'm not sure Casey's going to be able to oversee all the construction project and along with Mr. Jao, like work together. But this basically gives him the right to approve, approve of change orders and everything else, sign off on them, everything else. And do you want that right to stay with Casey? Or do you want that right to basically move on to project administrator, who's hired to oversee the project? Is what kind of what the discussion's around to see what the board feels thoughts are. Obviously, the job script is set up where the project administrator reports to superintendent. So obviously, if we leave it this way, it just bothers Bob or Casey. Casey's myself, I don't change orders, everything else. Bob will have to fully do that. Or, so Kate, really, the three options I see is leave as is, change the superintendent or designee or change the project administrator with authority. And that's, didn't know what the board's thoughts on that were. I don't have a specific recommendation for you. I don't know, Bob, if you have a specific thought on that?
Since it involves me, I'd rather stay out of it. I have a personal opinion, you get the project moving, but that will be up to the board's decision. The more people you involve in a change order, the delays can cost you money. But it's, like I said, it's like Mr. Jones said, it's completely up to the board.
So in the current process is you would make a recommendation to the superintendent? And superintendent would sign off?
Current, what's happening currently now is I'm attending those meetings and making the decisions at that time.
Okay.
And when I move away, it's going to, Casey would have to do that. Or she would have to be updated by Rick or myself and then she would have to make the decision. And so what we're asking is, should that ability to make those decisions at those meetings follow the, follow me into the new position? But I would still then, I would still then fall underneath the superintendent.
If, if we made it superintendent and his or her designee, could she make you the designee for the meeting before you went in?
Well, sometimes you don't know what they're going to discuss with me.
That's, that's what I'm saying though. Could, could, could you be the designee in advance? So you could make the change on the fly and then update her afterwards? Does that make sense?
Yes, I would think it'd be very much like the designees are now. And we, we'll sign the title and it, it stays with them for a period of time.
Right.
So I'm not, I'm not sure I'm answering the question.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm asking the right question.
I think either. Like I'm saying, if we make it superintendent and his or her designee, that way we wouldn't have to change it again once we got, that way we'd be covering it from here on out, is what I'm saying.
Right. I think that the way I describe this position would be that the superintendent would still be in charge of the philosophy of the education.
Right.
I am simply hired to make sure that philosophy is built.
Yeah.
And so the change orders are more of the day-to-day issues. And that would, I mean, you can make it the designee, she can make me the designee.
Right.
I would think that would keep the project moving.
Yeah, I like that.
Once you fall back to the superintendent, it doesn't make, I mean, it's, it's a delay then.
He would be the designee.
You would be the designee.
And if something went crazy, like you bought your ten thousand dollar, you know, video thing, then we could look at the superintendent and say, get rid of the designee!
Right, that's what-
And if she didn't, then...
Yes, that's why option B is preferable to just...
Also, I have to say, the first change order a little bit.
I know that, I know he's not gonna do that.
Rick and I work so well together. It's just a matter, again, of not taking anything away from Casey to fit your superintendent.
Yeah, right, no, no, no.
But having, you've heard them, we're going to be already involved in the SDEs and probably further in most of the projects by the time the new superintendent gets on.
Exactly.
So to bring him up to snuff and to make sure we don't slow down, the idea was maybe to put it in the hands of the CFAP, whereas in terms of the construction manager, and then allow the superintendent to implement everything that needs to be done from the bussing to whatever, because they're going to be learning the system.
Part of the concern is, you know, there's not going to be an assistant. She's going to be learning superintendent position without the assistant. She'll tell me, obviously, but there's going to be one less person working, so we don't want to overload her.
Absolutely.
Which, you know, it's okay, we push her a little bit. Try not to overload her as much.
But my intention is, and she may not want to do it, is continuing to meet on a regular basis for her to give me the guidance that she feels a superintendent, the next guy. But again, I think the decision now is, it's not that I will just have free rein. Like Rick's saying, he's going to have to sign off. We have Hill International, we're a whole team.
Right.
We just don't want it to slow down. If they find, as Clay said, fatty soil or fatty clay, we just don't want to take time and move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd say, man, tell him fatty clay, Clay.
Alright.
So basically, if you're in favor of that, basically maybe a motion that would change the wording in this resolution from superintendent to superintendent or designee would be the motion, basically, if that's how you want to do it.
So moved, second.
So can I ask, if they do it that way, how will that, will that be an annual thing? Or how would that be decided?
It would stay the same until it's changed. It'd be up to superintendent side, who she wants to designee. And that could change with new superintendent coming in, you know, if it's her or whoever, that basically, they may want that authority, I don't know. So I assume it stays that way until, it's like you, you appoint who the designee is every year, every one.
But as the board, we could, we could change, we could make a new resolution, too. And we could say, well, we want the construction manager to be...
That's why we're going to you now.
Exactly.
We could do the same thing.
Yeah.
The only thing I worry about is if, if there's a change, there's usually, if you're involved in the project, somebody coming and it just...
No, no, it wasn't.
She lost it.
I lost my screen! I lost my screen, it wasn't you.
I mean, it's, I just, I think the consistency. It's still the full authority of superintendent's authority, who's going to give directions on the decisions being made, he or she.
Alright, ready, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
That passes. Number eight, chargers items, donations, and statement of purpose.
You both leave same time if you'd like.
Motion to approve 8A and B.
The donations with thank yous.
With thank yous.
Mr. Jones?
Do a second.
Oh, sorry. Is there a second? I'm getting antsy. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That passes, we have number nine, super tenants items.
I'll jump to B real quickly. The convocations tomorrow morning, just another, I've been inviting you in my updates. It starts at 8:00. We're going to keep things moving very quickly. They have a busy day with safety and so forth that follows. There's a lunch around 10 to 1. 11 to 1. A little more, a little tight. So please feel comfortable if you're there, I'm going to be introducing you guys. I also, we put together with Garmin and Miller a presentation that's being played at the street fair. It's been in our beginning of our building. And I guess I, it's a three-minute video. I thought we'd just go ahead and show it, we'll be showing it tomorrow to the staff. But you can roll it. It gives you the footprint of the school, and the architects have done flyovers and inside the buildings and everything. Stay around 40 inches to the bottom.
You look impressive.
And I'll probably be talking tomorrow. He's saying that this is the kickoff session all the way up to where they're at now. And those are the footers. This is basically the elementary there. It's definitely, that was just a week ago, August 1st.
Wow, big change.
Yeah.
More of the high school has stones. Various color stones indicate areas that have radon or will have radon protection, and parking lots obviously won't have that. We've tried to update a lot of the colors that were talked about in groups.
That should be changed to white.
Seating on all four sides. Auditorium, about 800 students. Remember, there's four pots towards the back. With the elementary, they use various colors in the pot areas and school colors in the general areas. Just a special note, I forgot there were some power lines out there, just about that.
You just about hit?
Just about hit the power lines, right here. Right at the bottom of the screen. Forgot about those. The scaffolding that he was talking about is about, around that tower right now, and that gym wall. We did change our trash pickup area to incorporate, have cement block to basically blend in with the brick, so it'd be a little prettier. That will be on both buildings. It's a little tough to see the colors, but hopefully if it's dark enough tomorrow, they can see the black around the windows, the brick colors, the gray. Some of the floor colors are still being discussed. We're going with more terrazzo, so there may be some limiting of the colors to get terrazzo in more areas. Have elected to put enough lockers in for the 800 students. Half lockers at least. What are those called? Smart TVs, touchscreens instead of smart boards now, that next step up. Teachers asked for more bulletin boards and whiteboards, so those are placed in the back. So one of the general areas again would be more of the school colors. I'm guessing you might want me to put some music to this.
Yeah. Something.
Obviously, it connects the pods on the upper story, second floor, I guess. Libraries have mobile units that can be moved out of the way so the grad scores can go up during events, so that you can have some things going on there while the main area's being used for performances. Due to some bid pay savings and some alternates, the gym is now a wood floor. We'll have some bleachers, scoreboard hookups. And we're back around to the beginning, so that's it. I remember we used to fly on two floors, but now they've got it. So that's available at the street fair now, it's in district office. A lot of people coming in might have to stare at that. And again, that will be shown to the staff tomorrow, hopefully gain some excitement. One of the things I do want to add about the OSFC, we did have a meeting yesterday with the renovation of the high school into the middle school, and we thought we might be ready to maybe break that into the public's eye today, but we made some suggestions, and we felt it would be best to come back with the suggestions incorporated before we set people up to expect this and then get that. So that's getting fairly close to coming forward. And I think, I know Candy was there, it does take the main hallway and make it disappear so that we do have some areas.
substantially narrower.
It's really, it's really going to be neat, I think. So hopefully, we can have that available at next, next month's meeting.
I have a question, Steve. Would, and this is just, I don't think we need to really discuss it that much, but I know that you've been talking to the state a lot about our enrollment and the increased enrollment. It's kind of falling on deaf ears. Would it be worth it for the board to pen a letter to them and have them, you know, copy people?
Well, I think that, as I read the paper, too, and talking to Phil, he did it, Dr. Wagner, try to push the lawmakers to give schools credit for the enrollment. That's one avenue, the revenue to, for day-to-day operations. I allowed him to go down that avenue. I've been pushing the state in regards to the OSFC project and getting additional funding. They, I don't know, Rick's been at those meetings. I mean, every month, I gave the guy an extra five or 10 copies of our enrollment information. He keeps saying he's going to go back. I keep saying I'm willing to go down there and lobby. It's, it just, he keeps saying he'll take it to the higher powers. But what we're hearing is that even some of the schools that were on the agenda to be funded are not getting funded, so they're actually moving to the expedited, where they actually invest their own money first and then hope that the state funding is coming back. So I think they may be feeling a little bit of a financial strap. But anything that can help, I mean, there's nothing that can't help. It's not, nothing's working right now. So, you know, I keep trying the same thing. I know Einstein says that's insanity, but if you can think of something different, I'd definitely be willing to do that.
I think, I just was wondering if, I know he keeps saying he's going to take it to his higher-ups, maybe he takes it after his higher-ups get a letter from Southwest-looking local Board of Education. Just a thought.
I, I think it's prudent, because tomorrow, the presentation, I'm not going to focus too much on a lot, but I do want to show our staff that the enrollment projection for 25, 26 is 42, 50. And I put that in a little box, and then I show them that we're going to be at like 5,500 or 5,400 students. If the enrollment projections that Columbus first had and our monthly that we've had the last few years, so, will at least be 1,000 students over at the various grade levels. I know that we've talked about the high school, putting the additional space on sooner than later. I think we're going to have to continue to look at that. We, Rick and I have been pushing to try to, for that, even get it co-funded, because that's a couple million dollars, because we're 5,500, 4,500 split. That doesn't seem to be working. So again, you know, we're going to have to look at it, not just the high school level, because they're not all going to be there, they're going to be K through 12. Our elementary is going to be tight, so definitely some planning that needs to take place. So I think any letters that we put together, I don't want to lead you down the wrong path and say they're going to work, but we don't know.
Oh, I know, I know. Maybe you and the board president can look on that?
I have no problem. I have no problem. I mean, we have a lot of, you know, creative writers, we've all worked together, and we can all put letters together that, you know, put all our brains together, because we did have to do something as a board for the barricade system. That was a long, hard battle, but we finally got to that point. So certainly think that we could be an example district that's growing, that could use additional revenue, and I don't think they could say we're not growing.
Absolutely.
So we could, just like the barricades, take the lead on that.
Is there a reason not to carbon copy maybe some of the lawmakers?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, Senator...
I know, Rick, and Rick already sent some letters out about the funding, that we didn't get funded right. So maybe we hit the same people.
Yeah.
It just didn't hurt, you know? They won't do anything, maybe let's say they will help us.
Yeah.
I would like to just go down there and talk to them.
Well, that's, yeah, seriously, I mean, that's what I just said, maybe we need to go down and see.
Let me ask Nathan to set something up, and then we go down there and then see how they respond. And then, how they respond might be how we can develop a letter.
Yeah.
And then you can invite them to the schools.
Oh, yeah.
During the school day.
Yeah.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
I can come with you.
Nothing speaks to anybody like walking in that during a class change in the high school.
But back to what I, how I started, with that high school renovation, I think they did a nice job of taking the big hallway
Yeah, and narrowing things down and moving bypass.
Making some other hallways to kind of bring it together. So we are moving forward with that. And the elementary has pretty much been laid out, and it's going to, so, it's already been discussed, but we're really moving along on four different projects. Any other questions? I think that was a question, wasn't it?
It was.
Alright, let's see. Teamsters Local 413 on non-agenda items. And Southwest-looking Education Association, okay? Alright, alright, number 11, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. We are adjourned at 9:12.